Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to this Tuesday, September 26th, 2023, regular session of the Carmel Clay School Board. Roll call, Madam Secretary. That would be you, Jenny.
I'm sorry. [laughing] Thank you, Madam President. Everyone is here and accounted for.
Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome. We are so excited to have you guys in our meeting tonight. We have some amazing presentations. I would now like to turn it over to Mr. Ferris. Dr. Ferris?
Thank you, Dr. Barris Ford, members of the board. Thank you for having us this evening. We are here to recognize students. But before we do that tonight, I'm going to ask Melinda Stefan to come on up. We're going to embarrass Melinda a little bit. She knows nothing about this. But we are going to recognize Melinda. So I want to read a little bit just about the work that she does and everything that she means to Carmel High School. So I want to take a moment to recognize the exceptional work of Melinda Stefan, our college and career counselor, specifically to highlight the outstanding dedication she has brought to both the College Career Office and the Counseling Department. Some of you may not even know that we have that office here. "Melinda works tirelessly to make sure all of our students and parents get their questions answered and provide support when needed. Whether she is overseeing our National Merit Semi-finalist paperwork, planning for Community Scholarship Night with the CEF, organizing career fairs for STEM, healthcare business or trades, or working on Financial Aid Night, she is always thinking about all of our students and how to best support them and those involved. Just recently, she took a bus with some students to the HBCU College Fair in Noblesville. She constantly posts on our school's social media accounts the opportunities she thinks our students may want to participate in, like the area college and career fairs. Melinda supports our STEM speaker series, goes into classrooms to speak with students when asked, and basically doesn't know how to say no. Whether it is bringing in skilled volunteers to work alongside her in reviewing college essays, planning a school-wide program, welcoming eight college reps into the building, just like we had today, same day of SSRT sessions, or sitting with a student who doesn't have the support at home to help fill out the FAFSA sheet, she seems to always find the time and keeps her focus on the individual in front of her. I have heard this said by Melinda. You may have heard it as well if you've ever worked with her. But her goal is always to make sure our students and parents leave their experience of a program or a meeting less stressed than when they came in and to feel supported. Melinda, you are truly a hidden gem within Carmel High School, and our students and families do not know how fortunate we are to have you as a Greyhound. I truly can't say enough about the work that you provide to our CHS community. From all of our family, students and staff, we say thank you." And I want to finish by sharing a comment with you from a parent and a student recently at Carmel High School. "Mrs. Stefan met our twins right where they were in the college search, and they helped each identify their personal and academic needs and goals. She supported them individually, but also us as a family, as sending two to college at once is a lot." I may need to talk to you about that. "We were impressed with the personalization of the process and her kind heart when they got stressed. They are each in perfect places for them, and we are so grateful for Mrs. Stefan's support and guidance." From a CHS graduate. "I just thought I'd check in with you." Now, this is written from a student. It was sent to her. She didn't know I kept it. So she didn't provide this to me. "I just thought I'd check in with you and let you know that I will be moving into my dorm for the school year this Sunday, and would like to say thank you for all the support and advice that you gave me while you worked with me. I honestly don't know where I would be in this whole process without your guidance. Thank you so much, Melinda Stefan." You're welcome. Now, we want to get a picture at some point. That's Mrs. Cole really wants to get a picture. You want to do it right now? Okay. All right. Now, the real reason we are here. On behalf of the entire CHS faculty and staff, it is my pleasure to celebrate the CHS students here tonight who have earned academic honors from the College Board National Recognition Programs. These programs recognize underrepresented students who have excelled on the PSAT exam and/or have earned a three or higher on two or more AP exams. All who are recognized have earned a 3.5 GPA or higher. Eligible students are invited to apply for the National African American, National Hispanic, or National Indigenous recognition during their sophomore or junior year with the aim of helping them to both connect with colleges and stand out as academically talented applicants during the admissions process. Quite an accomplishment. We are so proud of you at Carmel High School. At this time, Melinda is going to introduce these very impressive students, awardees. You are going to come forward. When Mrs. Stefan reads your names, though, we can congratulate you. And then you're going to stay lined up just over here so that we can get a group picture as we end the recognition program.
So I'm a words of affirmation person, and so I'm excited to both be affirmed and to affirm our students being recognized today, for sure. So we'll start from the top. Being recognized with the National Hispanic Recognition Award, Gabriel Aiken. Gabriel, if you'll come get... I forgot to give instructions. If you'll walk up and get your handshake. Gabrielle, I'm sorry. So I'm going to give instructions. I apologize, Gabrielle, that I didn't give you those instructions. So if you'll walk up to the table, shake hands, get your certificate, and we'll do the Carmel clap. Okay. One clap. Okay. Receiving the National Hispanic Recognition Award, Joseph Arroyo. Receiving the National African American Recognition Award, Adama Bari. Receiving the National African American Recognition Award, Avery Batit. Receiving the National Hispanic Recognition Award, Emmanuel Carrillo. Receiving the National Hispanic Recognition Award, Emerson Kate. Receiving the National African American Recognition Award and the National Hispanic Recognition Award, Isaac Cesades. Receiving the National Hispanic Recognition Award, Joseph Del Busto. Receiving the National Hispanic Recognition Award, Adolf Flores. Receiving the National African American Recognition Award, Julian Gorg. Receiving the National Hispanic Recognition Award, Liam Hansen. Receiving the National Hispanic Recognition Award, Alexander Heron. Receiving the National African American Recognition Award, National Hispanic Recognition Award, Farah Inman. Receiving the National Hispanic Recognition Award, Alexander Jones. Receiving the National African American Recognition Award, Jackson Jones. Receiving the National Hispanic Recognition Award, Drew Macias. Receiving the National Hispanic Recognition Award, Sophia Malerby. Receiving the National Hispanic Recognition Award, Sarah McGowan. Receiving the National African American Recognition Award, Maren Michael. Receiving the National African American Recognition Award, Ariel Nusa Fatso. Receiving the National African American Recognition Award, Chukudu Maybi Noafor. Receiving the National African American Recognition Award, Michael Okoye. Receiving the National Hispanic Recognition Award, Jacentia Palicio Villavicencio. Receiving the National Hispanic Recognition Award, Leo Prosser. Receiving the National African American Recognition Award, Kofi Quist. Receiving the National African American Recognition Award, Hillary Riley. Receiving the National Hispanic Recognition Award, Bethany Sanchez. Receiving the National Hispanic Recognition Award, Arthur Shilts. Receiving the National African American Recognition Award, Priscilla Smith. Receiving the National Indigenous Award, Samuel Teek. And receiving the National African American Recognition Award, Jimmy Winbusch Jr. These are your College Board National Recognition Award recipients. Thank you. I really am a words of affirmation person. Means a lot.
Thank you so much to our incredible students, to our incredible teachers and staff. And I'd also like to say congratulations and thank you to the parents out there. Without you, none of this would have been possible. We will now take a short break, as I know it's a school night. And you guys, feel free to stay. But if you want to leave, please do. All right. We will now continue on with our meeting. We do not have any public comment tonight. We will move into consent. Do I have a motion to approve consent items?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving consent, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries five to zero. We'll now move on to the action items for tonight. The first one is the adoption of Policy 4330, Use of Medications. Dr. Dudley.
Yes, thank you. So this evening, I bring to you for recommending for approval of the changes in Policy 4330. And the changes were required because of the state legislature had some changes in the law that we can now have Narcan in our buildings, in our health centers, and we can use that. This is very similar to we right now stock EpiPens as well for anybody that might be having a medical emergency. And so this policy changes that, which is in alignment with the changes in our state legislature.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Dr. Dudley, can you put your microphone closer to your mouth? If you're going to... Thank you.
She's so hot. Right. Do I have a motion to approve the adoption of Policy 4330? So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay. All those in favor of adopting Policy 4330, Use of Medications, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries five to zero. We'll now move on to the adoption of Policy 4362.01, Anti-Bullying. Dr. Dudley.
Yes, thank you. And so this policy also has some slight changes due to changes in the Indiana Code. And so we just needed to add a few changes to the policy. We already had this anti-bullying policy. And so I bring this as a recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? We have Mr. Brown seconding. Discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving the adoption of Policy 4362.01, Anti-Bullying, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. We'll now move on to the adoption of Policy 7510, Use of School Facilities. Dr. Dudley.
Yes, thank you. So this policy does have some slight changes in the use of school facilities where it outlines that the facilities need to be used by organizations and not by individuals in the policy.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the adoption of Policy 7510, Use of School Facilities?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. We'll now move over to change orders for West Clay Elementary Playground renovations. Mr. Todd. Tell me how to say your name when you get up there, because I'm going to learn how to do this.
Thank you, Mrs. Browning. Members of the board, Dr. Barrisford. My name's Todd Finoleo.
Got it.
I'm the Director of Facilities for Carmel Clay Schools, and I'll do my best to stand in for Mr. McMichael tonight. The first change order is number 5.4. Deals with West Clay Elementary Playground renovations. And this was a change order that was necessitated by an unforeseen condition when we were removing pieces of the asphalt from the playgrounds. It turned out that it was not as thick as we originally intended or originally expected. So we had to do a complete removal and replacement of all the asphalt. So it's recommended the Board of School Trustees approve the below-listed change orders for the West Clay Elementary Playground renovations.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve? So moved. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. We will now move on to 5.5 change orders for the Carmel High School Natorium addition and existing natorium renovations.
So a couple of items of note on this. One is that $3,080 of this is a no-cost change order to Carmel Clay Schools. It would be backcharged to another contractor. And then $20,000 of this is for striping for the entire high school campus. Brings our fire lane, no parking zones up to code. Approximately 19,000 linear feet of striping allows it to be enforced by our school resource officers when people park in a no-parking zone.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Thank you, Mr. Brown. Discussion? All those in favor of approving the... Oh, go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. I'd asked a question earlier. It seems like a lot of money for striping. Could you explain a little bit more about what all is involved? I mean, how big of a project it is and all the different... Seems like it's more than just striping as well?
It is. It's striping that comes 12 feet out from the curb, which was the state code. It's the diagonal striping within there. You'll see it at the high school if you go there now. 50% of it roughly is completed. It's, as I said, over 19,000 linear feet of stripes. It's close to 100 no-parking stencils, close to 100 fire lane stencils, and then a dozen signs that go along with that. So it's a pretty extensive little project. In all cases, our construction manager looks at the unit costs, verifies all of the pricing. I look at the change order, verify that the amounts are reasonable before we pass it on for approval.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. We'll now take a vote. All those in favor of approving the change orders for the Carmel High School Natorium addition and existing natorium renovations, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries five to zero. We will now move on to the next change order, the Carmel High School Performing Arts Edition and Renovations.
So as you know from the packet you received, this is a pretty beefy change order. It encompasses painting and wall covering, epoxy terrazzo flooring, structural steel, flooring and tile, electrical, casework, and mechanical, and plumbing. Seven contractors. It encompasses 34 PCOS. And rather than go down the list, I'll just be happy to answer questions as they come up.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Brown?
Yeah, that's a very extensive change order. There's a lot of elements in there. Could you give a little bit of background? It's a change order. So it's $200,000. And what comes to mind? And I'm new to the board, so I'm trying to get a handle on the magnitude of these kinds of things. Can you give some kind of perspective on percentage of what this change order is up to the full project? So I get kind of a feeling for, is it, you know, overall kind of a minor thing? I know things don't always go to plan, and you learn things that you get into projects. But if you can give us a little bit of that.
Yeah, I wouldn't classify two hundred thousand dollars as minor. We take that amount seriously. It is broken up into thirty-four different change orders. As you'll see, one of them that, two items of note, close to thirty-five, I'm sorry, actually, thirty-nine thousand dollars go to additional exit devices and fire strobe. I don't have one in here I can point out, but alarm strobes that are required were asked for and required by the Carmel Fire Department. I'm blanking on the word. The...
Fire Marshal.
Fire Marshal, thank you. Who comes in afterwards as for occupancy? Some of that is items that were working in the high school in areas that needed work in the past, but it wasn't necessarily done or wasn't noticed. Fire Marshal says, you know, you'd be a lot safer with students to put a exit sign right here, to which we say, thank you, we'd be happy to do that. Others, we do construction that wasn't anticipated, and it turns out a bulkhead is in front of a fire exit sign. All of this happens, of course, after the fact. So running conduit above finished ceilings and with lifts over finished floors is more expensive than if we did it just in the process. So tends to be a little bit higher. And then there was another item, forty thousand dollars for a lift projector in a band room. Just one of those items that it was shown on the drawings as having a pendant mounted projector like this. And when students get in there, the guard, and they're throwing fake rifles up in the air, and we have a ten thousand dollar projector, makes sense to move it back in the room. Something that we would have done up at the front if we had anticipated that. That's part of the project, just come across those and make good decisions after the fact. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, yes. Is this like a, where you accumulated all the change orders, so there's kind of one big batch? Or do you see that there could be more coming?
Well, there's always, until we finish out the project, there's always the possibility that there are more. But I don't anticipate a change order, for instance, for electrical of this scale. There are a lot of things that we catch towards the tail end and encompass in one big change order for that.
Okay, so this is an accumulated change order of all, I mean, we're not gonna next month have another two hundred thousand dollars?
I wouldn't expect that, no. This is multiple what are called proposed change orders to get encompassed into one larger change order.
Yeah, Todd, if you can correct me, but like when we get to the end of a project, like the punch list goes on, don't we have like a lot of little bitty, tend to have a lot of little bitty change orders?
Yeah, that's correct.
You probably will have some more coming as we piece things together. And sometimes we realize things when it's, you know, almost completely finished, where there has to be a little adjustment here or there. So there'll probably be some other charges, but...
As well as some credits for deducts for allowances that we didn't spend and those things.
And we also do some, we always have like a contingency fund that we anticipate there's gonna be changes, and we'll spend money out of that too as well.
Correct. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other?
Thank you for that explanation, because I think like Greg, I'm learning, new to the board, and learning what a lot of these changes, at first it's, oh, there's changes to things. But I also have seen it in my business experience, which I would have known a couple of years ago, but that when you move into a space or there's renovations to a space, you just, the plans are never, the end construction is never quite what the plans look like, what the plans are drawn out to be, just because things like fire and signage and other things are there that you have to change at the last minute. And so I think having the detail that we see really helps, so thank you for that.
You're welcome. That is part of the process. It's, we hire professionals to design it, we hire professional engineers, they work with everybody. It's lines on a page until you walk into the room oftentimes and say, oh, that doesn't make sense. As an example, in one of those rooms, we have a hundred-foot curtain on the plan. They said, well, that curtain could be drawn, and you couldn't see a strobe light. And so we then have to add additional strobes out. That's tough to see on a lines on a page.
Thank you. Any other board questions? All right, we will now take this for a vote. All those in favor of approving change orders for the Carmel High School Performing Arts addition and renovations, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries five to zero. We'll now move on to the change orders for the Carmel High School Greyhound Activity Center.
So this is a single change order for an area of exterior synthetic turf that was missed by the bidding contractor, underground drainage that involves that. And so we have a net change order of eight thousand three hundred and one dollars to pick that up.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Thank you, Mr. Brown. Discussion? All those in favor of approving the change orders for the Carmel High School Greyhound Activity Center, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries five to zero. You're doing great so far.
Well, thank you.
What a way for Roger Levy with all of these. We will now move to change orders five point eight, the Carmel Life and Learning Center Interior Finishes.
So this is another change order that encompasses a lot of little things. This is just done differently because we have a single contractor on that job. So a number of areas that were decided in the process of working on the interior improvements at the Carmel Life and Learning Center, that we want to expand a physical therapy suite to account for another office, use an unused area and convert it into an area that's needed. The same thing in the Wellness Center, in process of converting two rooms to exam rooms, and we had another office that we could convert and some additional finishes on that.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Greg?
Yeah, so is this a budgeted capital project? Or are we getting, able to get the funds from another line item, budget line item? I'm just not sure if this was a project that was a change order to an existing project as much as it is something we just have to do, because we've grown the center, we've added some personnel there.
It is a change order to an existing project. I'm not sure the other part of your question is mine to answer.
I... What funds were used for that project? We'd have to ask Roger Levy's back or someone in his team.
Yeah, I think the answer for me is that it was a project that was funded, and this is a change order to that.
I think so. If it was its own or a new thing, it wouldn't come under the change order line. It would be a...
It's definitely part of a project. I thought you were asking what, probably what project fund it was from. So you were just, yeah, if it's a change order, it's already part of a project.
Great, any other, oh, Kristen?
And just to clarify for public, this is the center that staff and employees can come and utilize. So there's some renovations to that space for that, for physical therapy and then for the medical usage for the clinic.
That's correct. It's the building across from the high school that is part Wellness Center, part Physical Therapy, part Workout Center, all those things.
And I can speak with experience of this particular part, just because I'm old and things keep breaking and I have to go there. But we, in that area, we had one private room, and then we had one open space that had like a curtain. And we've gotten more and more volume in that. So now what they did was went in and built another, I'd call it a physical therapy room, another private room off, and it goes back into another section, and they just basically reconstructed another room so that now there's two private rooms for physical therapy and then the open area with the curtain piece. So we've just gotten more volume of use in our Wellness Center, so that was the purpose of that project in particular.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor of approving five point eight change orders for the Carmel Life and Learning Center Interior Finishes, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We'll now move on to the discussion portion of our evening. The twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Program of Studies course changes, Dr. Dudley.
Yes, thank you. So this evening I bring to you several proposed changes for our Program of Study at Carmel High School. And so each year we have a curriculum advisory meeting, and the curriculum advisory committee is made up of teachers and administrators, and the department chairs for each department come before the curriculum advisory, and they propose either new courses, modifications to courses, or deletion of courses. And the way these courses come about is we look at students and student interest. And so we have certain courses, like we are proposing Arabic one as a new course. And this has been, this came about because we've had a lot of student interest over the last several years asking for us to add Arabic to our world language courses that we have. And so we look at student interest. We also look at student interest when we look to delete courses, where we may have a course in the Program of Study, and then we have very few students that elect to take that course as well. And so then after several years, we'll look to delete a course that does not have high interest from students. Also, course changes come from the state where they approve new courses that we are allowed to incorporate into our Program of Study, and so we add those courses. And we're always looking to add new opportunities for our students and making sure that we are providing those opportunities in very rigorous coursework for our students so that they are prepared for the future. We have, you know, we had a great presentation by Mrs. Stefan where the college and career is one facet of that piece. But we want to make sure that all of our students, when they leave Carmel High School, that they're ready for whatever future that they might have. So that might be college or a career. And so many of our courses look to offer that dual credit and also the graduation pathways in offering different pathways. So this evening, as I said, I have several changes. We have changes, a course that we're adding in our Special Education Department, where our students in Special Education, we have some students that receive diplomas, but they're on a different track where they're looking at earning, they either earn credits or they also can earn applied courses in that. So this is another course that we have offering for our students in the Special Department. We also have some, a new course and a deletion in our English Department, or actually two deletions. One is Debate Two, where we have very few students that are choosing to take Debate Two. And they also have other options where they can take the ACP speech, where they get college credit through IU. And so we have very few students over the last several years, and so that's a deletion. And then a deletion and an add to add a course with World Literature is another elective course that juniors and seniors can take, and then deleting ethnic literature. But some of the pieces that were in ethnic literature would be incorporated into the World Literature. The ethnic literature, we've had very few students over the years that have elected to take that course. And so they're hoping with adding the World Literature, we'll have more students that will take that course and have an interest in that. And as I said, in the World Language Department, we're looking to add Arabic and also Arabic for heritage learners. And then the second level of Spanish Heritage Learner course, last year, we added Spanish Heritage One for our native speakers of Spanish. And we have quite a few students that elected to take that course, and we have more students that want to continue on to take the language. And just for your information, for World Language, for our students to get an academic honors diploma, they need to take at least three years of a language or take two and two, two years of one language and two years of another language to be eligible for that academic diploma. So when we offer a course, we know that each year as we offer it, we're looking to continue that to at least get to a Level Three. So our students that are electing to take that World Language, they have that opportunity to receive that academic honors diploma. And so we also have, in our Math Department, we are actually making some, we have two new courses, deletion and a modification, where we're realigning our pre-calculus courses. College Board came on with an AP pre-calculus class that many of our students will, would like to take. We have, right now we have pre-calculus, honors pre-calculus, and then we have, we have the two levels of the pre-calculus and the honors. But what we're looking to do is realign that where we would have the pre-calculus, the AP pre-calculus, and then also the AB pre-calculus BC, which is even a higher level than what would be the honors. So our students will have those multiple pathways. And then they move into, they may move into the calculus AB or the calculus BC. And so they have different pathways there, so they're realigning those courses in the Math Department. In the Performing Arts Department, we're looking at adding some dance courses. We don't have those currently in Performing Arts, and they really feel like, you know, we have a very strong Performing Arts Department. We feel like we have many students that would be very interested in taking the dance, as well as we have an IB dance Performing Arts course. And then we have several IB classes. We have the higher level for IB Psychology. Right now we offer the standard level, and this would be a second year for our students in IB that would be interested in taking the IB Psychology. And then also taking the IB Design Technology at the higher level, which would be a more advanced in our Engineering Department, where our students have the opportunity to really get into those higher level design elements in the courses. And then a deletion in the IB Physics. We have had very few students interested in taking the IB Physics. We also offer the AP Physics, so students that want to take it at that high level, they can continue to take that. But with the IB Physics, that's one that we've had very few students interested. And then we have several pathways that we are looking to enhance or to actually start. So one, right now we already have an accounting college pathway where our students can take Principles of Business and then accounting, advanced accounting, and then accounting capstone. We are looking to add the Business Management and Administration capstone with some new courses. Well, in the accounting one, they'd take the Principles and looking at the Finance and Finance and Investment. Because we have some students that don't necessarily want to take the accounting pathway, but they're very interested in the Finance and Investing pathway. And so we're adding those courses so that they could go into that pathway. And then also the Business Management and Administration pathway. Currently, we have one in Marketing, but this would add another course where the students would have that pathway where they can end that with the Business Administration capstone, where they really look at some different topics in Human Resources, looking at International Business in that capstone course as well. And then we're also looking at adding an advanced dual credit course through Purdue, Fort Wayne, where our students have Computer Science, an advanced Computer Science coursework, where they have the opportunity to really look at programming at a much higher level. And it's another dual credit course that they are proposing. And then also, in that same vein, looking at, we have Information Technology Support that is currently a course, we are proposing to delete that course. That course, we have very few students interested in it, and in the past, it was a dual credit through Ivy Tech. Ivy Tech said, no longer can we make that a dual credit course, and so we'll have even fewer students interested in taking it since it's not a dual credit any longer. So we are proposing to delete that course. And then in our, another one of our pathways, we already have our Education Careers pathways, but we are proposing modifications to those courses. Currently, right now, we have one course that they get dual credit through IU, and another one is dual credit through Butler. We are proposing to put the pathway in where they would end up with three ACP coursework through IU for the Educational Professionals pathways. So the students, and we know we need more and more students that are looking to become educators. The students then, taking this coursework, would end up with nine credits through IU to start their coursework directly would apply to, if they went to IU or any other university, because they're actually college credits. So we're looking to align that as a modification. And then also a new pathway in Interior Design, and so offering courses there with that pathway. And then another pathway through the Art Department in our Polytech on Graphic and Digital Design Pathway. And then in our Physical Education Program, we're proposing a new course in Exercise Science, Principles of Exercise Science, where we would then propose additional courses to build out the pathway in Exercise Science, where students would have the opportunity to end with a certificate in Exercise Science, and they may move on to college in that area. And with that new course in Exercise Science, that would replace the two Sports Medicine courses that our students currently take right now. Right now, this, because this level, this course would replace Sports Medicine One and Two. It would cover this, some of the same topics, but then they'd also have the opportunity to continue that pathway. And then the last course we're proposing is a Principles of Literacy. And this is a course that we have students that may need more help. They may have attributes of dyslexia and they need more help in their, in when we look at the science of reading and be able to offer them support in that area. The students that would take this course are students that are right now working at a very high level. They are taking many AP classes. They may be taking many honors classes. But what they're finding is it's, it's where they have, you know, possibly dyslexia where it's taken them a long time to do their reading assignments and they need that phonemic awareness or they may need that phonics help that right now, they got, they get to a level where they need more help in that area and we want to make sure that they are prepared for life. And so, this is a course that we're offering for our students. This would be a very small number of students that we may need to serve. But we are finding that we need, we do have students at the high school that we do need to continue to serve in this manner. And so, that's a course that we're proposing. So, questions with that?
Before I open it up to the board, I just want to say, program of study changes coming across the board is maybe one of my favorite things because I get to hear about the incredible things happening at Carmel High School. And if our public has never seen the course catalog, I mean, it's like a junior college. And it is so amazing to be able to work, my daughter, who's currently a sophomore, I mean, it's like the world is her oyster. She gets to really kind of hone in on exactly what she wants and to have options. And the staff over there is so amazing because her mama is like, what the heck's going on? You know, all these questions and everything. So, again, thank you guys so much for all your hard work and to give these options to our kids. So, with that, turning it over to the board. Louise?
Hey there. Thanks for the updates. A couple of questions. One is, what's the average enrollment we're looking for to determine level of interest?
So, typically, a course where we're looking at interest, we're looking for at least where you could run at least two sections of a course. Many times, it's very difficult. We do have courses, they call them singleton courses, but when you're building that in a schedule, you, it's very difficult to schedule because then it clogs up the entire schedule. So, having more than one section is definitely in, an area. And so, sometimes though, when we start a course, it may start with just one section, knowing that it's going to grow and we looked for it to continue to grow throughout the years. And that's where we have very small numbers of students where those courses don't grow. And, and one of the things is the students have so many opportunities, as Mrs. Browning was saying, that it's, it, you know, you're really looking at what opportunities are the students most interested in.
Okay. I'm excited about the Interior Design course. Wondering if I could take that one myself. And then I'm also excited about the Arabic offering, especially for students that end up going to the military and get stationed in countries where they speak Arabic. I think that's great, like setting them up to be successful there. And then I did have a question. Do we ever consider or, or do we have data that we kind of evaluate where maybe students are consistently applying to certain schools and not getting in because maybe we don't offer certain things? That kind of, I, I feel like adding that to our strategy, if it's not already there, could help, you know, provide some preemptive steps to maybe build some bridges where students have some interest or whatever.
So, so one thing, and actually, it's fitting that Mrs. Stephan was here tonight. So, one is, one of the pieces that she works with is she works very closely with universities and the entire counseling department does as well. And so, we don't have necessarily a evaluation process, a formal evaluation process. But as we are looking at, you know, where our kids are going to different schools and they're, you know, as we hear, they're not getting in because they need a course similar to this or they need a, a different type of a course, that information then does feed into our curriculum advisory piece and all of those pieces.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Jenny?
I would imagine, it was so impressive, the, the work, and I know it takes a lot of time and effort and study. Some of these positions, I would imagine, are pivots of existing staff. Something like Arabic though, is that something that was in the stages for a long time and we've brought someone in specific? Or is this somebody that's already part of our team that just happens to know Arabic?
So, for the Arabic, well, if this course goes through and we have enough students that elect to take this course, then we'll be looking for a person that speaks Arabic to teach the course. I know when, at the curriculum advisory meeting, they did talk about, we do have some people on staff that do teach Arabic. Now, I'm not sure if they'll be interested in teaching on the Arabic. But then the, the other piece though too, is when they do the entire schedule of what students elect, they are predicting that we'll have some students, let, students that might have taken French may elect to take Arabic rather than French because they are very closely related. And so, we may have less sections of French and where we pick up the sections of Arabic.
And then one question about the IB Physics. So, is there no requirement in the baccalaureate, baccalaureate program that they have physics? Or is that something where they just need so many credits and you're able to omit physics and have that not be something that will count against them?
Yes, so to receive the IB diploma, they would need to take science courses. We offer three other IB Science courses that students can take if they need that for their IB diploma piece. And then because we have the AP Physics, students that are interested specifically in physics can also take the AP. We have a lot of students that take both IB and AP courses.
All right. Thank you so much. Congrat-
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to our Staff and Student Services report. Dr. O?
Good evening, President Browning, Dr. Bearsford, and members of the board. I'm going to do a little bit of a twist tonight with our board update. Typically, I come to you and I present all the great things that are going on in Human Resources and Student Services. And I'm still going to do a bit of that this evening. But tonight, what I'm going to do is I'm going to present a challenge that we have this year. I'm going to present how we approach that challenge and how we're continuing to work on that challenge, specifically when it comes to special education instructional assistance. Then I'm going to pivot towards our substitute teachers and give you an overview of our pay structure for substitute teachers and how we've restructured a couple of years ago with regards to how we are paying our substitute teachers and our philosophies and beliefs around that. So, without further ado, we're going to focus first on our instructional assistance. And so, the challenge to start the school year is that we had numerous openings for specifically our instructional assistants that focused on special education students and supported them in the classroom on a daily basis. And so, what we did and how we approached that is Dr. Herrera, myself, and our HR team got together and we came up with a communication and you'll see, I have the tweet up on the screen here. And then in addition to a social media campaign, we sent, as hopefully, most of you in the room received this email, we sent an email out to all of our parents and our staff and shared about the need for special education instructional assistance. And so, we sent that out on August 29th. On August, on, on that same date, we received 31 applications just from that communication. And it went out to, I believe, over 33,000 emails, which was outstanding. And then the next day, we received an additional 21 applications. That's a big number for both of those days. And so, not all of those 52 applications were just for special education substitute, or special education instructional assistance, but that was the focus. And so, since then, once we received those applications, our assistant principals went to work, our HR staff went to work. We've hired 10 special education IAs since September, which is a very impressive number. And so, in addition to those 10 special education IAs, we've hired a number of substitute teachers from that, a number of custodians and other classified staff members within that group. Now, we don't hire all 52 because we want to make sure we interview them. We want to make sure they're a good fit, they're of the highest quality, so on and so forth. And so, we're continuing to do that to this date and reaching out to that pool of candidates, which we are very proud of. However, we still have some work to do and we still have two openings, which is fantastic for special ed IAs. I attended a state HR meeting on Friday and this is a struggle across the state, as many of my colleagues shared with me. We have two positions at our middle schools and then we have six special education instructional assistant positions at our elementary level. And so, next steps in what we're going to do is we're going to work with Emily Bauer and as well as Dr. Herrera. And we're going to create a video that delineates the different roles of special education instructional assistants. Because I think sometimes they don't know what each role of a Life Skills Special Education Assistant is or an ED or what a Resource IA does. And so, we're going to put that information together. We're going to educate our community and then we're going to put that out. And then hopefully, we'll get a few more people that say, hey, I have a heart for working with our special populations and I want to make a difference with Carmel Clay Schools. So, that's the next steps. We're very proud of our work. We still have some work to do, but wanted to share a challenge we had, how we approached that challenge, what we did and what we're going to continue to do with our special education instructional assistants. And so, in addition to our special education instructional assistance, we have, we have recess IAs that supervise recess. We have kindergarten instructional assistants. We still have some of those openings as well. And the reason why we have those openings now is because hiring within our classified staff of, as I've said and shared before, it's a cycle. So, it starts with our substitute teachers. We had a great pool of such substitute teachers to start the school year. But then, when the IA positions open and our permanent subpositions open, then that's the pool of candidates that go into those roles. When those roles, those people go into our maternity leaves, many of them, which were very fortunate, have teaching licenses and they'll cover other leaves that we have. So, it, it is a cycle and we're continuing to work, but a lot of that comes from our substitute teacher pool. I do want to share that we're very fortunate that we have teachers from other school districts that come to us and serve as instructional assistants or substitute teachers in hopes of becoming a teacher with Carmel Clay Schools. And so, we continue to work that side of our hiring pool as well. So, I wanted to share that piece and then wanted to talk to you about our substitute teachers in general. And so, if you look at our pay rate for substitute teachers, our regular subs, our daily subs that come in and they can pick and choose which positions they'd like, where they'd like to work, what buildings they'd like to work is $80 a day. For our special education substitute teachers that work in our Life Skills classrooms, our developmental programs at the elementary level and with our ED students, they earn $90 a day. If you're a retired teacher, you earn $105 a day. And so, our neighboring, I, I gathered data from our neighboring Hamilton County School Districts. Zionsville is at that same $80 a day. Westfield is at $85 a day. HSE at 90. Noblesville 95. However, our philosophy in Carmel is to pay more for those substitute teachers that work more and are dedicated to Carmel Clay Schools and are substitute teaching with us at more days than maybe once a week or a couple of times a semester. And so, what we do is we have a substitute teacher bonus incentive. And so, it's earned each semester, so it's earned twice a year. So, if you can earn a $500 bonus each semester if your gross earnings are 4,900 or above. So, for example, if a substitute teacher works 62 days within the semester, what that does with that bonus is that increases their daily rate to $88 a day. And if we go back, that puts us much more in line with the other school districts in the area. Additionally, if they earn a total between 3,900 and about 4,899, they earn a $350 bonus each semester and that puts them at about $87 a day on the, on the 3,900 end. And then we also have another structure. If they earn 1,900 and 3,899, a $150 bonus, they would be at $86 a day instead of that 80. And so, as I said, bonus pay is issued following the end of each semester. So, a substitute teacher would increase their daily rate with a bonus if they worked a minimum of 24 days each semester. Now, with our philosophy of wanting to pay more for those substitute teachers that come to Carmel each and every day, we did a bit of restructuring about a year or a year and a half ago within our substitute teachers. And we had some permanent substitute teachers, but we increased that number quite a bit from what we had previously. So, our permanent substitute teachers are, if I'm a permanent sub at Mohawk Trails Elementary down the road, I come to that building each and every day and I substitute for a teacher in that building each day. So, I know what my assignment is every day. I'm there 180 days a year. And so, with that permanent sub position, they can earn between $101 a day and $122 a day. And if you look at our neighboring districts, then that really puts us above all of the other districts for those positions within Carmel Clay Schools. And then each elementary has two permanent substitute teachers. Each middle school has four and Carmel High School, because they have a lot of teachers and it's our largest building, they do have 14 substitute teaching, permanent substitute teaching positions. And then we also have a category of district special education permanent substitutes. And then we have two, and those are four in the district. And then we have two positions located just at Carmel High School. And these are substitute teachers that specifically work in our special education teaching areas without, throughout the district and at Carmel High School. They are some of our most outstanding substitutes. They do a lot with our students. They're very hands-on with teaming with teachers and with our special education students, our Life Skills students, our ED students, our development, developmental primary students. And so, they are very valuable to us and then they are paid between $152 a day and $178 a day for their role. So, that's a brief overview today of our special education instructional assistance as well as our substitute teachers and their work without, throughout the district. Always going to throw a plug in there for bus drivers. I didn't go over that today, but I'm going to do that every presentation. But our link is there if anyone's interested in applying for any of our roles we have within Carmel Clay Schools. As I said, on day one, we were fully staffed with teachers, which not many districts can say that throughout the state of Indiana. And I can say today, we are fully staffed with all of our teachers here within Carmel Clay Schools. So, we are definitely proud of that. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. O'Stryke. Do I have questions from the board? Greg?
Yeah, thank you for the detail. What would be the typical hours a day a substitute teacher would work?
Seven hours a day.
So, wow. So, they're making less than a lot of people would be making at non-skilled jobs. You know, like a, I won't have to mention any, but, and I noticed, thanks for getting the detail on the other school districts as examples to kind of give us a, an idea of the market. But it, it just seems like, because I've, I've spoken to one some time ago that had a lot of experience, you know, a master's degree, taught at the college level and high school level and operated as a permanent sub. So, they made pretty good, not the $80 a day, I think more, 145, something like that. But it's, it's such a low rate and it, it, it just seems like there ought to be a way that the whole area, I mean, it's for us to, I, I understand trying to be at market. I mean, that's normal. We're capitalist economy, so that's what, how we do things. But it just seems like collectively, we all underpay for that position, which is so valuable. You know, to have a teacher not show up for all kinds of reasons, unexpected even, unexpected. It's such a valuable need to have a qualified person come in that it seems like we would want to pay them more than, more in the minute, than a minimum wage kind of a scale. So, is there any, I, I don't know if we coordinate with other districts to look at, you know, maybe we all need to collectively bump these salaries up or, I don't know. It just seems like there, we ought to find some way to pay them more than, than we pay them.
Yeah, absolutely. And I do meet quarterly with the Hamilton County Assistant Superintendents that oversee Human Resources. And this is a topic that we consistently talk about. And we do, you know, we have, as I shared this evening, we have a little bit different philosophies, how we pay. We pay more in certain areas and less for our daily subs. But it is something- We pay more in certain areas and less for our daily subs, but it is something we're continually looking at. We do have finite funds, so if we were to pay substitute teachers more, you know, who are, who may we pay less? Or where are we going to, you know, put those funds in order to pay substitute teachers more? And if we were to take, you know, a chunk of money and put it towards substitute teachers, I think my philosophy would be to potentially increase that bonus, bonus structure so that they can make more each day, so that we're taking a look at those substitute teachers who are here much more each and every day versus someone that might just come for, you know, a couple days a semester. But it is something we continually look at, and you're right, we are at market right now. We want to be competitive in the area, and so we'll continue to take a look at that.
Couple questions.
Real quick, I just want to kind of chime in on that. So I had the, the privilege of being a substitute teacher for Carmel Clay Schools before I joined the board. And for me, a hundred percent, like if you cut it down by the hour, you know, it's not amazing. But for me, what it was, it was the perk of the flexibility. It was the fact that I could, you know, you have a handy dandy app right on your phone, and I'm like, I'm available today. Where do I want to go? I got to pick what grade level, you know, high school scared me. My high school still does today, my high schooler. So I loved elementary and actually even loved middle the most. So I was like, okay, I want to teach middle school. And so, then I, you know, was able to kind of be like, I'm going to go to middle school. And then, within that, you're able to see like, you know, I'm not going to be a gym teacher today. You know, I'd rather teach social studies. And so, for me, the, the ability to choose what I'm doing and the ability to be like, I feel like doing it today, but I can't do it tomorrow, or I don't want to. So for me, I know that that doesn't pay bills, but it was something that I was, I saw as a perk of the job. So that was something that was really nice. And I liked the ability that Carmel gave to have that choice. It's not like you just sign up and you guys pick where they go.
Yeah. We do have many parents who may have other jobs and have flexibility within their jobs. And so, they may be a realtor, and on Mondays, they might be able to come in and substitute teach, to give back a little bit, make a little bit of money, not much as we saw. And then, so we appreciate that. We also have students who are maybe juniors or seniors in college who don't have class on Friday, and so they're going to come substitute teach. And they're going to be teachers one day, and it's a great experience for them as well. Right now, we have a partnership with Butler University where their special education classes come into Prairie Trace and to Clay Center. And so, what I do for that is we pay for their background checks, which is a nominal fee. But that background check gets them on their way to becoming a substitute teacher. So then, we see them coming in and they get to learn their craft, because they're going to be future teachers. And so, we're able to get some more substitutes in that way. We had a great substitute teacher class this morning that Kelly Hackett, who oversees our substitute teachers, taught today, and so that was encouraging. But it is a constant flow of trying to replace our substitute teachers as they go on and serve in other roles within our district.
Thank you. All right, questions? Jenny, did you have one?
Yeah, I have a question. So.
Remind us, what bucket of fund do those, are those substitute teachers paid from?
My understanding is that's the education fund that it comes from, and Roger could clarify that for us, but that's my belief, it's the education fund.
So inadvertently, if we raise the payments for our substitute teachers, we're impacting our career teachers that are here with us on a day-to-day.
Potentially. It would have to come from somewhere unless we're receiving further funds from the state in order to increase that amount.
I think I would add to that, though. There's, there, when we talk about the education fund, it's not just teachers, what we would classically think of as a teacher. There's a lot of administrative kind of support in there. So I think it would be a rather small number if we could bump it up, you know, some big thing like twenty-five percent. Just a guess, but it's, we wouldn't be, I don't think we'd be taking that away from teachers.
Yeah, so we, the district spends approximately a little over a million dollars on substitute teachers a year. And so, if we'd increased that twenty-five percent, that'd be a little over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we would have to find for that. And so, we did some restructuring, like I said, about a year and a half, two years ago, to put the bonus structure in place and to have the different levels of permanent building subs. And so, we were able to take the current pot of money and kind of restructure it a little bit in order to have a little bit higher pay for those permanent subs, which has been a great success after talking with our principals. But our work's not done, and it's never done, and we'll continue to take a look at that.
Thank you. Kristin?
Yeah, I did. A long time ago.
Go.
Okay, I got lots of questions. You know, someone working in HR, so I appreciate the hourly breakdown that Greg shared. So I was just kind of doing a calculation, if they worked eight hours, which we know they work seven. And if they did nothing but substitute teaching for forty hours, I came up with a yearly salary around twenty-three thousand. And, you know, that's not livable. So I, I have more questions. So it seems like a very small percentage of the subs actually work that sixty-two days that we are saying, you know, would constitute either them qualifying for a bonus or anything else. So not a lot of people get more than that, looks like the eighty-dollar daily rate. So remind us, you know, I know you've been with us for a while, Dr. O, and if you don't remember, it's okay. But remind us, how have we adjusted our, our rate outside of the bonus offering as it correlates to inflation over the last few years?
So the last increase was in August of 2021, when we went from seventy to seventy-five. Previously to that, it was increased in 2017 when we went from sixty-five to seventy. So those have been the daily increases, and then sixty-five, seventy, no, seventy to seventy-five, and then seventy-five to eighty. So we made that in 2021, the seventy-five to eighty, and then 2017 was that seventy to seventy-five. So, so that's been the increase with regards to just the daily rate. And then, like I said, a year and a half ago, we made the restructuring of the permanent building subs.
Okay, gotcha. So about five dollars from 2021 to 2023. And then, like the average amount of days that we have in a, in a particular semester, what is that?
About ninety.
About ninety, okay. So they'd have to work maybe seventy-five percent of the days, right, to get the bonus? Okay.
Well.
The highest bonus?
The highest bonus, sixty, yeah, about, about, yeah, about sixty-seven percent of the days that semester to get the highest bonus.
Okay. And I appreciate us having a competitive salary, right, looking at our neighboring districts? Although, the, that one district, I couldn't, can you go back to that slide?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. So Westfield being eighty-five and HSC being ninety, and Noblesville being ninety-five. Yeah, so, I mean, I know our team has to align on this, but I'd love to, maybe it would come from Roger, just really understand, if we were to raise this daily rate, what are the, what are the pools that we'd have to pull from? Like what financial pools would we have to pull from? You know, what could be the impact? Because I think, you know, Carmel is the destination school district. So it's fine and well that they are paying what they're paying, but I think we should be paying more. So how do we make our district the destination school district? Even if you're going to be able to work one or two days, you know, out of the month or the, or the week? So I, I don't know, you know, the team has to align on that, but I would love to know. Is it really feasible? If it's not feasible, why? You know, what, what, what are the potentials to become a little more competitive on this front?
And I think one thing too, we can also do, as we're always doing, is when we are working with our legislatures to, for the budget, to make sure that we, I mean, this is great data for us to share when we're meeting with them about, here's what we're having to pay our substitute teachers, here's what we're having to pay our teachers, here's what we're paying, I mean, administration. It's all online, it's all public information. So it's something where I think we can, you know, that's something that we can go with and also say, you know, another thing is, you know, our referendum, I mean, that's something that's coming up too, that all that money goes into. So I think it's something that, you know, there's so many factors at play. I love everything you're saying. I just think that we can, we can do more than, you know, just kind of that. I think we can branch out and stuff too.
So how do we make progress with evaluating the situation?
Well, and what are the statistics on when we don't have enough subs? So if we're meeting the demand and it's not impacting us, although it is nice to be able to pay people more, certainly. But if we are meeting our demand, then maybe this isn't the, the target that we have to hit. Maybe it's continuing to look for higher salaries for the people who are investing their time with us every day. So I mean, I think it's a balance. If we have, if we're not continuously short on subs, then it's not a need that we might need to address right at this juncture. So is that something that you can provide us with?
Absolutely. I can provide you with whatever you would like. I have everything you've talked about, so when you talked about, you know, how many people have the, have received the bonus, I have all of that data. I'm happy to share any of that data with you.
I would love to see that data, and I hear what you're saying. I, you know, I am a proactive leader. I don't wait for there to be a deficit for us to change the game. I think about how can we change the game before there is a problem? And how can we, at all times, I'm always thinking about, how do we set the bar for bus drivers, for education, at all levels, whether it's, you know, a student that is an AP or not? And I'm also thinking about my teaching staff. So I get it, if it's not an issue, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. But I also go, five dollars from 2021 to now, I, I just like, man, I think it's an opportunity. And how can we assess if there is a feasibility, waiting, instead of waiting for there to be a problem?
And I know it's something that you guys are working on, so thank you. Thank you, Louise. Kristin?
I know, I get to be last and I have lots of questions. So one of my questions is already asked. I was going to ask, could you do a breakdown of the number? Would you be able to break that down by that, that type of bonus they get, those three different tiers?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, well, I'm just going to say something positive first of all. I really like the video idea. I say it a lot, I know, but the special education department is really near and dear to me. And so, making sure that we have IAs to fill those roles is really important to me. And so, I think the video of video, especially of, of IAs working with kids would, would go far. So I love that idea. I had a question. Were these staff who are IAs, subs, and bus drivers, are there benefits associated with those positions?
So it depends on how often they work. And there's a look-back period that if they work so many hours, that they would qualify for benefits. And so, then we also have other positions that are benefit-eligible right off the top. So there's many different categories and levels with regards to our classified staff members. So yes, some receive benefits, others can become eligible for benefits.
One more question. For IAs, since they, it's such an integral role in our, in this, in this district, is there a structure of mentoring new IAs, helping training them? Is there a structure in each school or altogether in the district?
Great question. Yes, yes, and yes. Before the school year even started, on one of our teacher planning days, before the students arrived, we had a whole day in professional development just for instructional assistants and permanent building subs, and it was very powerful. And we're always looking at opportunities throughout the year, but not just that opportunity. They have professional development at the building level. Our special education department does an amazing job with different types of trainings. They are all trained in, or many of them are trained in CPI on different holds and how to work with kids. And so, we have plenty of opportunities for professional development. Mr. Woodward does a safety training with all of our, with every staff member, including instructional assistants. So there's a lot that goes into continuing to train our instructional assistants. And then, really, especially at the secondary level with our department chairs, they work very closely with our instructional assistants as well.
So would that be, sorry, one more. Would that be who they, IAs kind of have, if they have questions or they need, if they're especially new IAs, we're trying to make sure they stay? Do they have a support system besides the professional development training at their schools?
Absolutely. Whether that's the department chair, whether that's the cooperating teacher that they work with and support, the teacher also provides a lot of support. And then, our special education department does an incredible job being out and about in the buildings. I see our assistant directors and our director in buildings all the time. And then, they have a team that also supports at the building level as well.
Greg, did you have something?
Yeah, the, the perspective on salary for the substitutes is interesting. You'd mentioned it's about a million dollars a year for, for just the whole pool. And when I look at that over the education budget, education fund, which I think is about a hundred and forty-five million a year, what we read last year, that's like point seven percent. So overall, it's a pretty small percent of our spending budget. And when I look at the operating referendum, just the operating referendum, the amount of money it generated from twenty-two to twenty-three, it's, it went up two-point-seven million. So that's like three times the value of what we're paying our subs now. So it seems like, perspective-wise, it's a small amount to start with. And to give them a significant boost of some kind would be achievable. And maybe we need to just have you go take a look at it and see if, if there's some, you know, certainly, we'd have to give up something, but maybe that something would be of a good reason to do it. And I think, and like I said, I appreciate you bringing the marketplace in locally, but maybe we need to be leaders in that and say, you know, these people, you know, and, and, well, just one other comment on that is, the, you know, some of the subs, as I understand, is kind of like an entry-level position? Is that true for like new teachers that might start out as a sub?
It can be, yeah.
So, so they would, the, the point being there, they would have like no experience, just some, maybe with very little experience. But then, we have others that come in that are retired and just trying to make some additional monies. But they would, you know, I think like if you're in a class, let's say you're in a high school class and it's a higher level class, if you had a permanent sub come in there that, or any kind of sub that's got college education, teaching experience or high school, you know, they would bring a lot of value. It seems like the scale ought to recognize that, that kind of a person. And perhaps they would get a lot more, you know, salary. So those are just some things I think we're.
Well, and one thing I'd like to add too is, our money expert isn't here tonight, so I think we can definitely get that information from Roger. But I did want to comment is, yes, we have seen an increase with the referendum, but we also, as a district, have seen inflation costs rise too. So everything that we have purchased is also a lot more money due to all the rising costs too. So I think that's definitely a Roger question, and I think it's something Dr. B had asked for you to take back and get more information for us. Thank you, Dr. O'Stryke. Is there, did I miss anyone else, anything else? Okay.
I'm excited. I am excited about the response, the response rate that we got for these positions. So thank you for your hard work there.
We live and teach and work in a fantastic community. And it reminds me of the time that when during COVID, we were extremely low on subs, and then the Carmel Moms stepped up, and we had this whole room filled with about eighty-five or eighty people becoming substitute teachers, and our Carmel Moms kept us afloat, and we were going to school every day. And so, we live in a fantastic community, and we'll keep working within that community. So thank you.
At that time, didn't you and Dr. B have to?
Oh, we were. Oh, yeah, we can send you lots of pictures. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on to our superintendent's report.
It's been a good night. I'm always, I'm like, I was at UK that said, I love program evaluate, you know, program evaluation, new courses. I, I, I love the balance of, of more rigor, you know, given opportunities for kids to be challenged a little bit more. But I also like the courses that are picking up the kids that have reading difficulties. And, and, because, you know, for years and years, if you had reading difficulties at the high school level, you had really nowhere to go other than getting some private help of some kind or another. So I love the, the breadth of the, of it. And, and how about dancing, you know? Those, all the dancers are going to be really, really happy with those opportunities to see how that goes. So there's so much there, so I appreciate that, Amy. I also appreciate the, the facts of the, of the hiring. I, I kind of warmed my heart that you guys were problem-solving a budget right here at the Dais. And, you know, and you're, you're, what you're doing right now is what administration does. We, we wrestle over the available dollars, and what is the best way to spend those dollars? And, and, you know, we'd love to be leaders of substitute teachers in the state of Indiana, as well as IAs in the state of Indiana, and teachers in the state of Indiana, administration in the state of Indiana. But we have a zero-sum game, because we get so much money from the state, and we get so much money from the, from our community that tax themselves. And, and, you know, we have a referendum coming up and, and that we depend on that. So there's a lot of pieces to it, but you guys, it was a great example. And I really appreciate you kind of digging into the weeds even a little bit there, because, you know, you can see how difficult. the weeds even a little bit there, because, uh, you know, you can see how difficult that is, and, uh, but, uh, you know, once you get done with the subs, then we'll bring you the IAs, and then we'll, we'll, we'll work the way through, because, uh, when you have a zero-sum game, if you take something away or, or change the way you cut the pie, then the other pie's gonna be thinner, and, uh, that's really where your, your values and principles come in, because you have to decide, you know, what's the best you could do for everybody in the whole team, and, uh, and of course, uh, every piece of the team is important, so it's, it's, it's a welcome to the world of administration, so. My, uh, superintendent's report's, uh, fairly short, uh, so I'll, I'll buzz through it as quick as I can, cuz I know we've been here a while. First thing I had was, uh, with a lot of pride and gratitude, I wanted to share that the Carmel Clay Schools Resource Officer Unit, she's in the back there, and, uh, Dave Woodward were recognized and honored at last week's city council meeting, and I got to go to that, uh, my specific assignment was to take pictures of them, uh, so that I could give them to Emily, so I did my job on that, but also I would, I wanted to be there for sure. And the city council, um, uh, was honoring them for the awards they received by the National Association of School Resource Officers, where, uh, they were chosen as a model agency across the country, and also Officer Juan Narvarte, uh, was the Bridge the Gap Award for his work at Mohawk Trails and, uh, with the, the, the school and the families of, of that, uh, school community, and then David Woodward, our own, uh, Director of Student Services, was the Safety Leader of the Year by the Indiana Nazro, and I know I've said that three or four times, but again, it's really, really pretty cool that, uh, and we're fortunate and grateful to have, uh, such wonderful collaborative partnership with Carmel Police Department in the city, and it was just awesome to see them recognized by the hometown, hometown leaders, and appreciate the Carmel City Council for that. Like I said, just a minute, a second ago, uh, referendum season is upon us, and, uh, I thought I'd give you the referendum rundown, so we'll, we'll probably add that to the, all the way to November, but, uh, we held our first two town hall meetings last week to give out some factual information, uh, about the referendum, our administrative team and several parent volunteers, uh, also, uh, Amanda Booth at the, uh, the Carmel International Arts Fair this weekend, so appreciate the parents and, uh, and staff who, uh, who showed up for that, uh, met hundreds and hundreds of, of, um, community members, I know, uh, K, KDU were at the, uh, homecoming, uh, little table we had, and then Kristin was there, and, uh, I also think I remember seeing, uh, seeing Jennifer Yu there, but, uh, hundreds and hundreds of people that really were not informed about the referendum, and, uh, being able to, to be there and give them the factual information about what's going on and what's at stake, uh, was just really, it was really time well-spent, appreciate Emily coordinating all that. I, I was at the, uh, it's a few, the same players, a lot of us were at the, uh, Automobilia, you know, uh, event as well, and same kinda deal, I just, uh, just put up a table and started talking to lots of people, so I'm, uh, trying to keep spreading the words so that we haven't informed, uh, voters out there. So I thought I would tell you, uh, the, uh, you know, a lot of time we spent was, uh, you know, giving out information, but we also asked, answering questions, and, uh, and part of the questions was just misinformation, so I thought I'd give you the Bears for Top Three misinformation, uh, pieces that are out there. Uh, number one is that, uh, we are, uh, just extending our current referendum, so the percentage is not changing, we are not raising the, the referendum rate, so it's staying exactly the same, people are saying, well, how much, you know, what's, what's it gonna be now? I said, exactly what you're paying right now, exactly what we have right now, so that's number one. Number two is, um, funding for building projects are loans, and you can't take and borrow money to pay, pay in benefits to staff, so, um, we do have several projects, uh, across the district, uh, the money that's being spent for that is, is money that we borrow, and then you, you've, if you've watched this meeting, you know that we keep paying those loans off, our tax rate, we, it stays point-eight-six, it's stayed that way for over twenty years, and, uh, the way it works is you drop off debt, you add a project, you drop off debt, you add a project, and that way we keep a steady, um, tax rate, which is always important. So, billiards have nothing to do with, uh, paying benefits for teachers or the, the referendum funds. And number three, um, referendum funds were not used to pay the parachute people that, that came down at, at homecoming with the American flag, uh, that, uh, we, there, there was no referendum funds used for that, and, uh, you have to remember, athletic events have sponsors, and then we have a gate receipt, so, uh, um, it's, it's not taken out of the education fund, uh, and, uh, and I'm sorry that hurt some people's feelings. Our, uh, final, final referendum town, home, um, our town hall meeting is this Thursday at Creekside Middle School, so if you didn't make the other two and you really wanna get some good firsthand information on, uh, uh, what the referendum's all about, make sure that you, uh, you do that, all are welcome, just bring your ID to check in, and, um, we'll present a lot of great and accurate information in thirty minutes or less, so, uh, I, I probably go longer than that on my superintendent's report, so it's gonna be, it'll be quick and, uh, right to the point. I, I can't stress enough the importance of being an informed voter, and I'll also share, uh, on Thursday night, you come and show up, I'll show you my concerns about the referendum ballot question, and, uh, without giving too much away, uh, it's not great, it's not a great question, and it can be very misleading to the uninformed voter, so it's really, really important to come and see what keeps your superintendent up at night. And then, uh, another thing I wanted just to, to share with you, because it was so cool, is this, like, past week, I had lunch with a delegation from, uh, one of Carmel's newest sister cities, which was Yalgiva, Latvia, and so, uh, we had great conversation through an interpreter, so, uh, you know, you gotta have a little rhythm when you're working with a, uh, interpreter, but, uh, they asked a lot of questions, their Minister of Education was there, so they wanted to know a lot about our schools, and, and, uh, probably the thing we had the most in common was how wonderful the work our teachers do for our kids, and, uh, here and in Latvia, and, uh, and how honored they are around the world, and so, uh, uh, really nice shout-out for teachers around the world. Uh, they also took in our homecoming parade, which, uh, they've probably not experienced, Dr. Ferris took them on a tour of Carmel High School, and then, uh, later that evening, they enjoyed their first high school American football game under our Friday Night Lights, and, uh, they were decked out in Greyhound gear, and, uh, just, uh, were having the time of their lives, so, uh, uh, that was really fun that, uh, they were there and cheering for the Hounds, and so, uh, that was kind of a, a unique experience and, uh, another special part about Carmel. And then finally, my bell ringer was just homecoming, uh, the homecoming week was, uh, one for the record books, and it was really celebrated across the district because a lot of the elementary schools and middle schools, uh, followed up with kinda like dress-up days of their own, and they had special activities, and I know there's a hot dog roast at Carmel Elementary, and there's a lot of fun going on all week long. Uh, the dress-up days included Barbie versus Oppenheimer, and I can tell you with some confidence, nobody did Oppenheimer. There was a lot of pink on that day, and, uh, and I hope you saw the picture of Dr. Ferris in his Ken outfit. It was hysterical, um, respectfully, hysterical, uh, but anyhow, they had Movie Day, Movie Character Day, Space versus Space Jam, so there's a lot of jerseys from Space Jams, if you guys remember that one, from, uh, quite a while back. Yeah, they just had a lot of fun, of course, Blue and Gold Day was on Friday, and, uh, and it was a sea of blue and gold that went down the trail to the stadium for, uh, for the pep session, and the student activities, they have like a, like a, a big, uh, you know, just area of all the student activities and getting snacks and, uh, really enjoying, and then, of course, Friday night, that the Hounds were able to defeat, uh, North Central pretty soundly, and then, uh, the Friday night, uh, or Saturday night, of course, was Homecoming Dance, and, uh, all the kids dressed up and, and had a good time there, so congratulations to the student leaders, almost all of the work of homecoming is done by students, student leaders, and, uh, along with, uh, staff and a lot of parent volunteers who really make it all happen, so my bell ringer is, it was, uh, one for the record books, and, uh, the, the weather didn't hurt either, it was just absolutely gorgeous, uh, you know, so we'll make that a call that a night, and, uh, that's my superintendent's report, thank you.
Thank you. Um, for upcoming meetings, we have a, um, a special session, um, for collective bargaining, um, September twenty-eighth, October ninth through the thirteenth is fall break, we will return October seventeenth for our workshop, and October thirtieth for our school board regular session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor? Meeting adjourned, thank you.